Also happens unplanned. You can come across an idea, you can come across... But we are not referring to that in this discussion. That is getting more and more much about it. And there are a lot of issues that we are referring to in this discussion today. So in this discussion today, we are going to look at the planned activity engaged in order to transfer knowledge and skills. What do we need training? There are many reasons why we need to train. The first reason that I am reminded is for environmental changes, organizational and technological change. For example, in your organization, before the coronavirus came last year, there has been a way of doing it. But now, there is a condition that as well as a change to occur, and people need to do something differently from the way they are doing it. That becomes a reason, a need, why people should be trained, or this need or you need to be trained. It could also be a technology of change. For example, those of us that are in the public activities, we have been doing some of your programs manually. And now, we want to bring in technology, maybe for meeting, maybe for formulated feedback, maybe for doing one activity or the other. Maybe you have checked the cost of labor in your farm, and you find that, oh, it's too high. And you're looking for an alternative, how you can cope with that change. You say, okay, let me introduce technology. And once you introduce that new change within the system, there is need for you to train people that will handle the technology, people that will operate the system. They need, they need to be trained. Now, training is also needed in human relations. How you mix with people? How you talk to people? How you relate with your colleagues? How you relate with your clients? How you relate with your business partner? There is need for training in those areas. So that you can learn how best to communicate with people and to achieve result, expected result you intend to achieve. Training is also needed when you are changing job or when you are changing your job role responsibility. For example, you are a secretary, taking minutes, doing filing of an order. And now, you are asked to be a project administrator to record the project outcomes, produce reports, manage the resources. You see, the job role have changed. You will need training to be able to comply, to be able to deliver in the new job role or assignment that you are given. That is another need for training. Training can also be needed due to organizational complexity. For example, in RIT. RIT is a very big organization with hubs, with stations across many African countries. Then, the management system is very complex. The organelle is very complex. You must be put through in order to find a meeting where you can now progress from. So for you to understand that complexity and to be able to perform, to contribute, to be delivering of the objectives or targets of that organization, you will need training. And that is one other need, why we know we are needing training. Then, the next one is to match employee specification with the job requirements. You will have no peace that if you are a new employee into a job, you, you wouldn't know all that is required of being to do in that job, especially if it's a new organization where you are not new. So, for you to be able to match your specifics, before you are recruited, the, the organization must have seen some competencies in you, perceived competencies. They must have seen some potential in you in that role that they will say, oh, okay, this person can deliver if he is placed in this, in this job role. Now, when you come in, you need some training to be able to be guide into the required track, to match your competencies, the job requirement that the role that has been given to you is required. So, these are the reasons why training would be needed. Now, by the end of training, what do you expect? By the end, when you have undergone the training, what then do you expect? One, you expect to be more efficient in what you are doing. For example, if your efficiency is rated three percent, it's expected that when you have finished the training, your competency or efficiency should have increased, maybe to eighty percent, maybe to ninety percent, depending on other factors as well. Effectiveness, it's expected that after your training, you become more effective. The ideas, your solution, the solution you are bringing would be more impactful. You could be able to contribute more. That is what is expected, and that is why we are undergoing training. So, by the end of this training we are undergoing today, I also expect that your efficiency will improve, your efficiency will increase in terms of conducting training. You will also be more successful in your activities that relates to training. Then, you should be able to develop self-confidence. Now, you know the right things that need to be done. You develop confidence, oh, I now know the right thing, this is what needs to be done, and this is what I'm doing. So, that is one other expectation that is required by the end of every training. Then, also, you need to assist everyone in self-management. When you have acquired training and you are not transferring the knowledge or you are not being, the impact is not being felt by people around you in terms of enabling them to grow, enabling them to be more efficient within the system, then you are lacking behind in one of the expectations as well. So, you need to look out for these four things by the end of your training as an expectation from the question who has been trained to form. As I said before, if you have any question, if you have any issue, this you can indicate by raising your hand, and I will attend to you. Mr. Gabriel will call you up, and then we will have that discussion. Now, what are the types of training? There are so many types of training. There are so many classifications of training. There are so many kinds of training in literature. But for the purpose of this discussion, I want us to look at four fundamental types of training that we will discuss. Number one is training to the inductees of new employees. In some literature, you see as induction program, induction training. Induction training is a training given to a new hire, a new employee, to help him or her understand organizational structure, organizational goals, organizational targets, and expectations of organization for the job role that he is employed, he is selected to occupy. In this training, you will be taken from the organization as a case study. You will be introduced to stakeholders. You will be introduced to partners, you will be introduced to colleagues. You will be taken through some policies, frameworks, institutional guidelines, and things that will help you to settle in. So that you will not fall off the track, so that you not go beyond or below the organizational expectation. The organizational value, organizational culture, and all that kind of reorientation for you to also understand what the organization is all about and what is expected of them. So, that is one type of training. Now, the second type of training is training for improved performance. That is training where you are already settled in. You are already performing. But there is passing below expectation on your performance. So, you are required to take this type of training so that your performance will increase. Your efficiency, your effectiveness will also increase. So that's another type of training. A training where you are already in the system. And from what I, I understand, this is the type of training, this could be one of the trainings that we are conducting now. You are already doing something, but we want you to increase, we want your efficiency to increase. We want you to expand your dimension, and that is why we are organizing training. Now, training for advancement, that is the fourth type of training. In this training for advancement, it is a training provided for, for someone in anticipation that he is going to take a higher job role, a higher responsibility. It's a training provided for someone in anticipation that this person is going to be promoted or be given a higher job role. So, you are being prepared ahead of time. So, that's another type of training. Then, the last training, the fourth one that I will talk about, is the training for change and reforms. As I like, as I lightly said before, you are undergoing a change, a reform. The organization is undergoing a reform, and they will need to train people so that people will know that this is where the organization is located. And they will want to comply with what the organization is expecting. For example, if you are going, if your organization is experiencing change in leadership. For example, you have a new leader coming to the organization. He has his goals, expectations, he has his targets. And he wants to communicate this to the organization so that everybody can follow him. That could be, that could be another type of reason, type of training that people will want to participate in. So, these are four fundamental types of trains that you have. But there are so much more. And I can also categorize them into different types of training depending on what you are, you expect or what you want to get back. So... Sorry, I tried to fix some technical issues. Okay, so now, that leads us to next edition, which is the training cycle. I think we have come to the main need of the program. We have introduced training. We have said why we need training. We have said type of training that we may want to have and how to work on it. Now, we are coming to the core of the program, which is the training cycle. Now, I want to explain what the training cycle is and what it means. The training cycle is a cycle that describes the whole training process, starting from the beginning to the end of a training process. The training cycle tries to describe the activities, the plan, the program, all that is expected from the training from the beginning to the end. And it is a very, very long and complex process. And there has been a lot of studies, a lot of discussions on this, on this topic, what a training cycle should be. And there has been a lot of models that have been projected or presented by different authors, different researchers, different stakeholders to be used in the training cycle. But today, we are presenting the very fundamental, basic, universally accepted and the commonly used model. This model has been in existence for almost thirty years now and is still serving the purpose for training cycle. And it is referred to as the ADDIe model. ADDIe is A-D-D-I-E model. This model is saying that the training process starts from the training analysis. After the analysis, you have to go to the next step of training design. When you have designed the training, then you proceed to the next step of training development. Then, after you must have developed the training, then you proceed the training implementation. Then, after the implementation, you evaluate the training to see, to compare, to see whether what you had in mind in the beginning or started the training was actually achieved or not. So, these are the steps, processes in a training cycle. So, we are going to use the ADDIe model. There are so many other models, many of them that are out there and serves for different purposes depending on the type of training that you have, you have in mind. And depending on the type of group of people you also want to discuss training with. But for this, we are going to use the ADDIe model. The ADDIe model, as I said earlier, starts with an analysis. And that analysis is what is referred to as training needs assessment. As I'm calling it, training needs analysis. And some, and I've deviated to DNA, D-N-A. That is training needs assessment. And I'm trying, I'll try as hard as possible to explain this training needs assessment. Because training needs assessment is the fundamental, is the base of every training. It is so important that once you have missed the training needs assessment, you have missed the whole thing. You have, you have, you have, you will waste your time, waste your money, waste your resources, waste your energy, and conduct the training. And by the end of the day, you will not be able to meet the goal. Because you have made a mistake or you have missed the base, which is the training needs assessment. So, training needs assessment is assessing current situation, defining a future vision for individual department or organization. So, when you are doing a training needs assessment, you are trying to assess, you are trying to analyze what is the current situation, what is happening? Where are we right now? You are not projecting, you are, you are looking at what are, what we have, what is happening, what is at hand at this point in time. That is what training needs assessment is trying to do. That is what the training needs assessment will tell you. Now, when you have done that correctly, based on what we have at hand, you can now project into the future. You can now project into what do we need at a three levels, which I'm going to discuss later. And those are at the individual level, what do you need to attempt to the next goal or to achieve the target that you have set for the individual? What does the individual need? Then, we are also going to assess what does the department, the working group, the team, what do they need? Then, after you have determined, determined what the department or the team needs, then you go to the highest level, which is at the organizational level, to find out what does the organization need to be able to achieve this. So, in the training needs assessment, you are trying to find out the current situation in relation to the projected vision at individual level, at departmental level, and at organizational level. So that gives you the basis for you to say, oh, we will need to do this training, we will need to do that training, or we need to do the other training. And these needs are all different. Even though the misassessment is conducted at the same time, you will wait to see that later. Analysis is meant to address two important questions when you are conducting training needs assessment or when you are conducting this analysis. Also, let me mention at this point that when you are conducting training needs analysis, it's completely different than when you are conducting capacity development analysis, need analysis. They are not the same thing. Though in some, in some circumstances, they are used to refer to the same thing depending on the size and, and the, the, the scale of the program. But fundamentally, capacity development analysis, which is also a type of need analysis, is completely different from training needs assessment, from training needs analysis. So let, let me mention that so that you can take that along as you are discussing. Now, as I said before, when you are conducting a training needs assessment, you are trying to answer two basic questions. The first question is, what are the training needs? As I said earlier, you are trying to find out what is the current situation. So what are the training needs? That is the training needs assessment trying to answer that question. Now, the second one is, how do we identify these training needs? That is the second question that training needs analysis or assessment will try to answer. What are the training needs? By assessing the current situation for both the individual, for both the department or the teams and for the organization, then how do you get to find out what needs are? Now, in trying to answer the first question, which is what are training needs? I'd say that a training need is the deficit knowledge, skill, and attitude required by someone that he or she or he can do their job effectively. The gap, the deficit in knowledge, the deficit in skill, the deficit in attitude that is required by someone to be able to perform this job or a job better. That is what training needs is. Now, it exists when an employee lacks the knowledge or skill to perform and assign tasks satisfactorily. For example, you may be in a fish farm and you hire a laborer who you have told feed the fish two times a day, one in the morning, one in the night. I will come back next week to see how they are doing, that you need. Now, the man does not know his feeding technique. He will try to do whatever he wants to do. But by the end of the day, when you come to evaluate and see what he has done, you will find that it is not doing the correct, and that will cost you a lot. You have to inter, interview with him, you have to interrogate him, you have to find a lot of discussion with him. Do you know how to do this? Okay, show me. And he demonstrates how to do it. There and then, you should be able to find out whether he knows how to do it or not. If he knows how to do it, fine, he knows. Now, demonstrate how to do it. The knowing how to do it comes in the discussion that you have with him. Now, this key on how to do it comes with demonstration on how to do it. So, you can there and then find out if he knows how to do it or not. Then you can interrogate this skill of that. So, if he says he knows how to do it and he has described to you how to do it, then he has the knowledge on how to do it. Then, now you know to find out whether he has the skill on how to do it or you have show me how to do it. Then, he demonstrates how to do it in a fish pond. Then you see, oh, he did well, then you know he knows how to do it. Now, the attitude comes in. The attitude is, can be derived or from that, but how he's handling the process. Yes, he knows how to do it. Yes, he has demonstrated, he has demonstrated he can do it. But what is his behavior? How does he take life? Does he have the passion for the job? Does he believe with himself that what is contributing to the job makes the job to grow? Does he have this self-drive to make sure that the fish pond succeeds? That because of attitude. So, the staff may have the knowledge, may have the skill, but may not have the attitude. You may say, ah, it's not my fish pond, Jamie, you don't have the success for the, let me share it so that I get my way by the end of the month. What's my business, collect my money and go. That becomes an attitudinal issue. And those are the things, the training needs, you want to find out. Okay. Let's look at this diagram. It's a simple diagram that will help you determine training needs. Now, in every job, it is expected that your performance should be hundred percent. Except for those that a specific target is issued from the beginning when the job is assigned to you. But where the target is not specified, is expected that you deliver at hundred percent capacity. Now, after your appraisal, performance appraisal, will you, the, the result shows that you are performing at below hundred percent capacity. It means you are not performing at full expected capacity. And the difference between the expected and your performance capacity is the gap. That is where the training needs comes in. For example, you are into poultry production and you have a sales, uh, staff, a sales officer and they are giving a target to sell, make sure he is distributed and sells hundred crates of eggs per month. By the end of the day, instead of delivering concrete, or is expected to deliver nineteen, uh, crates of eggs in a month and the ends of delivering seventy-five. As you can see in the diagram, the area shaded and highlighted in yellow tells you that this is the gap. And that is what we want to find out, why is this man or this woman not performing up to the assigned expectation? Why is he always below expectation? So, when you analyze this gap, this difference, when you analyze, you begin to determine what skills, what knowledge, and what attitude that made or that created that is the puzzle factor or the root factor that made him not to deliver up to the expected ninety percent. That describes, this diagram describes to totality what the training needs assessment or training analysis is trying to achieve. There could be so many factors that will lead to this, uh, below, uh, performing below expectation, but we don't know why. It just, it has shown that this man or this woman has performed below expectation, below expected, uh, rate that was agreed on from the beginning. But now, why is he performing below expectation? The training needs analysis is trying to answer that question. That's why we need training needs assessment. Now, when you analyze why he is performing below expectation, you should be able to find out, uh, why he is doing that. Then, the trainings analysis will tell you, okay, these are the reasons, these are the reasons, and these are the reasons. Then, from there, you begin to project if you will need to conduct a training on him or if you need to conduct a training for the unit or if you need to conduct a training for the organization, then that will also reflect when you have done the training analysis. Now, how do we identify training needs? Now that we have seen there is a gap in this person's performance, he has performed below expectation. So, which means there is a gap. Now, the next thing is, how do we find out why that gap was there? The first step is information gathering. You have to find out, you have to get information of why he is performing below expectation. And that is done through so many methods, so many means. There are so many needs and so many methods you can do the information gathering. You can use the proper scientific method, you can use, uh, quantitative, uh, methods. You can use quantitative methods, you can use different methodology, uh, available uh, within the scientific world to achieve, uh, information gathering. You can have one-on-one discussion and so on and so on. So, whichever method that fits your organization, fits your activity, that fits what you are doing is accepted. There is no clear, but it must be discovered before you can gather the information. You will have to use different methods and the ones that have the skills and expertise to gather, you know, information from, uh, both the staff who has performed expectation, both from the organization or the unit or the department, uh, that both the institution or organization at large. So, the information gathering they need should be able to cover all these three, uh, levels for you to properly say, okay, these are the issues. Step two, after you have gathered the information, then you analyze. The ana- analyzing the information will pinpoint, will give you the base root, the base factor that caused that gap. If you do your information gathering very generally and you analyze your results, you are going to come up with fantastic issues. You are going to come up with very vast issue, both the ones that are trainable and the ones that are not trainable. Let me mention at this point, when you do your training needs assessment, there are two fundamental categories of results that will come. One will be the trainable needs, the needs that require training to be corrected. The issues that require training to be resolved, those are called the trainable needs. Then, there are issues also that the training needs assessment will bring up that does not require training to be able to resolve them. Let me repeat myself. There are also issues that the training needs assessment or the information we have gathered for, for the training needs will bring up that will don't require training to address this issue. We refer to those issues as non-trainable needs. For the sake of this discussion today, we are not going to go into non-trainable needs. We are also, we are only, uh, concerned with the trainable needs. So, when you have done your analysis and you have found out the trainable needs and non-trainable needs, let's keep the non-trainable needs aside. Now, let's look at the trainable needs. The trainable needs will be categorized at different levels from the result of the analysis. First, we are going to have the needs at the individual level. That's what the individual needs in terms of training to be able to perform the function adequately. That is individual needs. From that individual needs, you can now create what we call personal development plan. In some, in literature, you see it as PDP's personal development plan. The personal development plans will tell you, is this, is a plan crafted in order to address the personal needs assessment. Now, you are going to have the second category of the needs analysis that we talk of on the team or the department or the unit that are training. The trainable teams within the department or within the unit or within the, the teams that the, that individual is operating in. Then, the last level of, uh, uh, the result of the analysis will now tell you the trainable needs from the organization where the person is working. So, this will give you three levels of the trainable needs by the end of the analysis. Now, when you have identified this from the analysis, the last thing you do is to produce your training needs, uh, report. The training needs report will now tell you, these are the issues at the beginning. These are the processes that we, 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 uh, use to gather the information. These are the statistical analysis, the statistical tools that we use to analyze the information we gather. And these are the results and interpretation of the training needs. Then, the last one, segment will now tell you the recommendation, the training recommendations that you have, uh, suggested to be able to address the needs that you have identified from the beginning. So, th- those are the four fundamental components of training needs, uh, analysis report. The issue that was raised, that is the gap, that you identified from the background. The information gathering, how you gather the information and how you are able to get the methodology you use. The, uh, the first section will tell you the analysis, how you analyze the information you have gathered from the, uh, from the methodology, the statistical anali- uh, mathematical, uh, tools and methods that you use. Then, the last section will, the fourth section will tell you about the result, that is interpretation of the analysis and what you have observed. Then, the last section, which is the recommendation and the report of the reporting, will tell us suggested needs that you have produced to address the issue. Okay, now, some indicators of training needs. What are the things that you see within the organization, within the person's performance that will give you an idea that, oh, I think there is a need for us to go into training for our workers? One, when you begin to get too many complaints from staff, from customers, from clients about a discipline, a particular staff or about a particular process, then you know that the signs are there. The signs are there. The first sign is a complaint. You begin to have complaints from staff, from your customer, from your clients about a person, about, uh, a process, about a quality, about deliverables, whatever that complaint is and is coming up. E- every time that complaint comes up, you know that there is need for training. The sign is beginning to, the indicator is there. The second one is poor quality of work. When the expected outcome of work that you have given out to your staff is of very poor quality and you always see it happening over time, then there is an issue. The sign is there. You have to do a training needs, you have to find out why that, uh, quality of work is always poor. When there is frequent errors in reports, there is always error in handling, there is always error. You see, uh, damaging, uh, uh, equipment, uh, breaking things, uh, the equipment failure over, uh, from time to time. Uh, excuses here and there, why the equipment is not working and this and that. Then you know that the sign is there. You have to find out if you need a training or not. You have to conduct a training for that unit, for that person, for that organization. The next one is last staff turnover. When you have people, you recruit people today, in the next one, they, they send out a resignation letter and say they are not more working. Then, something is wrong. You need to begin to look into the organization or you begin to look into that unit and to find out what is happening here. That is the indicator, that is the sign of a training, uh, need. So, you have to find out if, why they are leaving is something that has to be trained. Then, the next, uh, uh, indicator is when deadlines are not being met. We need your quarterly report or we need your monthly report or we need your sales report by the end of every week. And by that, by the end of that week, you begin to find out that the person will start giving excuses, the training is not, uh, the report is not ready, uh, the deliverables are not there. We want, uh, five hundred pence of fish by the end of two months or by the end of three months as the time you need. By the end of that, the month has given, you have two hundred instead of five hundred. Or you have a hundred instead of, uh, two hundred. You know that they are not meeting deadlines. Then, something is there, that is, that is the sign, that is the indicator that. And you have to check, have to go in and check if training is needed or not. Then, when you have conflicts among staff, when two or three people are doing something together, there must be some kind of misunderstanding from time to time, yes. But when you have a continuous conflict, a continuous misunderstanding, a continuous, uh, uh, issues that is affecting the job, then you know that the sign is there for training. You have to look forward to find out why the, that is going on and why the job is being, uh, not performed. So, you have to look into it as an indicator for the training. Then, the last one, which I want to also mention is, when you bring in new equipment, when you bring in new things, something new that the staff is not used to. They have not been, uh, used to this before, this is just brought in. And you want them to change, you want them to move from what they are used to to something new which is assumed to be better in terms of efficiency, effectiveness, and deliverables, then you will need training. You have to train your staff on how to use the new, uh, equipment. It's about changing process, you have to train your staff on how to change. For example, some organizations may want to change, uh, from manual way of doing thing to electronic way of doing thing. You have to train your staff on how to change and how to use it. For example, a process of doing something, uh, instead of writing piece of paper, you now want them to be writing on their mirrors electronically. You have to do some kind of training to help them to move from one, uh, uh, from old ways of doing something to the new style of doing it. So, those are the indicators. Now, I want to summarize the first, uh, layer, the first level of the add-ons, which is on analysis. All that you have discussed is on training needs assessment, that is, analysis as, uh, described in the adding module. So, I said, analysis helps to determine whether training is even needed and if so, what needs to be trained. In some cases, when you have conducted your training needs assessment, you will find out that you don't even need training. So, you begin to look at what else is it that you need. As I said before, you have finished your training needs assessment, you are going to have two broad categories of results. One is the trainable needs and the second one is non-trainable needs. You will find out that all the analyses ended up in non-trainable needs. Then, you finally discover that you don't even need training for that problem to be resolved. Now, you could also end up on having both trainable needs and non-trainable needs or having all trainable needs. Then, if that is the issue, if that is the case, then what do you need to be trained for? That is what is, the, the analysis will tell you. then what do you need to be trained for? That is what the analysis will tell you. Now, if this is missed or done incorrectly, you may end up designing and delivering a training program that may end up not addressing the issue at hand. So in that, at that point, that is, you have wasted your time, you have wasted your money, you have wasted all your resources in doing an activity that was not needed. That is why you have to be very, very careful when you are conducting a training needs assessment, a training needs analysis. It is very important, it is key, provided training is necessary. Now, we have identified training needs will be categorized into, as I said that before, the needs at individual level, needs at professional level, and needs at organizational level. At the professional level, we are talking about the departmental level, or maybe the teams, and all that. So that is what we refer to as professional level. And I would like us to start our group exercise with this case. And given this case, which we are going to use to run all the ADI modules for today. I think Mr. Gabriel will help us to create groups online, so that people will fall into different groups, and they will answer the question that is coming. Now, this is a case of Mr. Adia, who was rated sixty-five percent in his twenty-twenty performance appraisal. Out of hundred percent, he was given a target of hundred percent, but when the appraisal was adopted, he finally landed at sixty-five percent. But during the discussions with the supervisor, with the appraisal, or whoever it is that is discussing, or it are that is discussing with him, some of the challenges, or some of the things in relation which we are due as challenges, are one, that where is coming from, there is too much traffic. There is too much traffic, and that traffic always delaying from getting to job or to his workplace on time. That is one thing he complained of. Now, he also complained that his family are all going to the same direction, and sorry, it's he, he has to wait, sorry, I won't share, I think that should be he. He has to wait for all of the family members, because they are using the same vehicle, so he has to wait for everybody to prepare at the same time, so that everybody will be carried to their destination along the road as they are coming to work. So, which means they have maybe one or two, three different stopovers before they get to the workplace. Now, we also talked about that some of the client that he talks, he is discussing with, they are always complaining that he does not respond on time. When they call him, he does not respond. When they write him a mail, it takes quite some time before he responds, and all that. So those are the issues that the supervisor also identified with him. Then, the group, the team that he's working with are also saying that he does not have good rapport with them. He's always on his own, he's always trying to lose everything by himself. He's not like, he's not relating with them appropriately within the team. And also, his reports are always delayed. He's always submitting his report very late, and when he submit, it's not up to standard. He always submit substandard report, and it is affecting our members of his team, because they also want to have input into the report, they also want to use information from the reports to adequately do their work. And Mr. Adia is the marketer for RITA unit and the program. Please, this is not a real life scenario, it's a factual, I just created this scenario for us to be able to use it to perform the exercises in this training. Now, looking at this as an issue, as something that has been discovered during the performance appraisal. The first task for us this morning is, from this discussion, please identify what are the training needs for Mr. Adia. So, Mr. Gabriel will create a group, and all of us will fall into a group. So work in your groups to identify what are the training needs for Mr. Adia. We are going to maintain this group from the beginning to the end of this program. So give us five minutes for us to identify our group members, and we can work together, discuss online, and find out what are the training needs for Mr. Adia. I think you have time to start. You can wait for your rooms to be activated. Run down the list. It can be run down if I, you can not hear them, they are silent, they will fight also. It is not possible.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I created the group now, so we are having five groups, group one to five. I'm still checking where the rooms are showing. Yeah, we have group now, group one to five. Yes, we have group one to five. Okay, let me start the rooms, or what is this? Start rooms. Okay. Hello, everyone. So we are having five groups, and yes, we are having five group, and the five group are now open. So we have group one to five. Within the group, we can see the group members, and I think we should be able to, what do they have to do, sir?
In the group, they ask a question, just to find the training needs for Mr. Adia.
Individual, we do it, or?
The group, we do it, and they present as a?
As a group, okay.
So one person should be typing the results and presenting them, and share of your knowledge.
So how do they relate now? I've not used group before.
No, they will, what's this, this group has been created?
Come and say something, sir. Yeah, the groups are created now.
So all of them will be the same power screen.
Okay, so now we have group one to group five.
Yes, group one to group five. So each of the group, if you click on the group now, six people are here. So those six people are already in their rooms, you won't see them, except you go to that room.
Okay.
You are not seeing my screen, you will see the group are in the room.
Oh, so I'm seeing another group now. So I, if you want to talk, I'll be talking only to them, right? I am one, two, three, four, five, six, I can only say.
Is your name there?
Yeah, this is me. This is the one that is bringing to me.
Okay, now as the moderator or the coordinator, you should be able to go to?
All groups.
Yes, you should be able to go to.
Training of, training of, okay, so what is that?
But for me, I'm not a director, so I cannot.
Okay, yes, the room is mine, what is asked.
Yes, so you can type to them, okay. Please identify the training needs for Mr. Adia. From this. Well, I can't unlock the room because I'm not the director, you understand?
I understand. And sir, in the next one, this one is talking about agribusiness. You can also use practical, something like working in the farm, take like you have been doing, the case like fish production, or production orders for the next, I think we still have one case study.
Yes, this is one case study, but we are going to use it to discuss each of the stages of the money. Okay, the last is why you are going to be the leader and everything.
Okay, okay, okay. So can, can you talk again? If you, if you talk now, they, all of them will hear, right?
If they talk around themselves, all of them will hear, they don't produce themselves. Form them to.
But if I talk now, I don't know, maybe, can you hear when I talk?
Maybe, yes. They are talking maybe.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, hello. Good morning, everyone. We are now in a group session. So we have group one to five. On your screen, you'll be able to see those allotted to your group. You can talk together in your group. We have a group task, which is to, which is to analyze the case study and give what, and give what, sir?
Training needs.
Training needs. Yes, you have a case study of, of Mr. Adia, and for this training needs, we are asked to identify the training need. Thank you. What are we working on? They are asking.
Please use the case.
Do they have, are they seeing the case now?
Use the same.
Now, let's, let's do it this way. Let's close, let me close it and introduce again.
The groups.
And you explain again what to do, because I've seen, I'm using this also for the first time. So, bro, I'm learning, I'm still learning on the job, but I can see it's working. So I want to close the group now, I can close it. They will be all back to central, then you can address everybody once again. Let me close this, I'm closing this now. This technology is possible.
It is what we use before, we used it to add last year, but on Zoom, so it was nice. Very, very, as the moderator, you can enter any room, you can come out and.
Yeah, this one also is possible, I can see.
Hello.
Hello, are we together now? Yeah, wel- welcome, everybody.
Hello, are we together now?
Hello. Yeah, welcome. We have closed the group, actually. We want, we want our facilitator to explain to us once again what is expected for us to do within the groups. Okay, hello, everyone? Yeah, please, can we, can we mute our speaker so you can hear our facilitator? Our facilitator wants to address us once again. We want to go into groups. I believe all of us, all of us are following the presentation. Now, we have a case study. Hello? Yeah, yes, hello? Okay, we have a case study, he has given us a case, and this case is that he has given us a case of Mr. Adia and his problem. Now, he wants us to identify the training needs for Mr. Adia, okay? Yeah, are, are we all following this, this training? He has taken us through a point where he gave us a case study of Mr. Adia. He's having an issue, so he wants us to identify the training need together. Okay, so what will happen is, we are going to divide us into a group. The group will come about five, five person in a group, and you can only see those people in your group. So from within the group, whatever group you see, you can see on your screen, like five members, you can unmute your microphone and start talking to them, brainstorm on the question, and come up with the answers, I mean, the training needs of Mr. Adia. And one of you guys will present to us when we close the group. Is it clear now?
Okay, now, let me comment a bit. Please, you can switch off your video.
Yeah.
To make it easier for you, turn off your video, please turn off your video, and only leave your microphones on. Now, when we create this group, you will not be able to see the presentation. You can only see the group members. So what I will do once more is to project the presentation, so that you see the case. And give us three minutes or five minutes to write this case down. Drop this case on the paper. Then, the subsequent questions will be asked will be based on this case. Did we understand that? So I'm going to share my screen now for you to see the case of Mr. Adia. And what we are going to do is, based on Mr. Adia's case, only identify his training needs. What are the things that the needs he has in terms of training? He has, he has conducted a performance appraisal, and these are the issues that we have discussed. So from these issues, identify his training needs. So I'm sharing this once more. So this is the case of Mr. Adia. Are you seeing this? So now, from this is a case of Mr. Adia, please write it down. The only assignment or group activity here is for you to identify the training needs of Mr. Adia based on this discussion that you had. And also, the discussions that we have had from the beginning of the program. I've talked about what training needs is, and how to identify it, and how to record it. So, but this is a case of Mr. Adia. Following this case, identify the training needs for Mr. Adia. Then, once you have finished copying the question, Mr. Gabriel will send you back to your groups for the group activity. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you once again. I believe it's very clear to us now. Please, can you let us note down this case study? I'll give only one, one minute for that. Write it down, so that when you are in your group, you can discuss it and come out with the training needs for Mr. Adia. I believe we understand. Is it clear to everyone of us? So can we write down the case study now, so that we, I'll be able to break us into groups?